It's now 6:30, it's Monday, August 5th, 2024. We're going to call it a session, the regular Board of Education meeting. Before we do the pledge, unfortunately, we had another loss in the Marion City School community. I'm going to yield the floor to Ms. Swanger.
So Mr. Ted Stelarsik passed away. He was 92 years old. He is survived by one son, Michael. Michael, I know graduated in the class of 81. But Ted Stelarsik attended West Liberty University. He earned six varsity letters while starring on the school's baseball and football teams. He also was a rare four-year letter winner for the baseball team, compiling a 3.5 or 315 batting average over his four-year career while playing centerfield, right field, and second base when he wasn't on the mound. He was enshrined in the West Liberty University's Sports Hall of Fame in 2008. One of Ted's proudest achievements was serving in active duty from 1954 to 1956 as a staff sergeant in the Army's 3rd Armored Division from Fort Knox, Kentucky. He received a National Defense Service Medal and Good Conduct Medal while stationed at Fort Wadsworth, New York. He remained in the Army Reserve for another 10 years after that. Ted married Mary Ann, who just passed away last May, I believe. They were married in 1956. They moved to Marion that year, and they both joined Marion City School Districts, where Ted was an educator for over 35 years. He served as principal at Silver Street, Mark Street, Baker Middle School, and Taft Middle Schools. Ted prided himself on always giving the underdog, the underprivileged, and at-risk students additional support to succeed in school. He made sure that these kids received free breakfasts and lunches, personal tutoring to catch up on their reading and arithmetic, and he was a benefactor for many Marion City School athletes. He was a consummate instructor and school administrator, always ensuring that student, that the student was the top priority. So that is in honor of Mr. Ted Stelarsik, who passed away on July 16th.
Thank you. So after the pledge, we'll give him 35 seconds to recognize his commitment of 35-plus years to this district. So if you can join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Adam Trezor, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Ratliff?
Here.
Mr. Widling?
Here.
Mrs. Dyer?
Here.
Ms. Swanger?
Present.
Mr. Guyer?
Here.
Item three on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Mr. Hayner?
Absolutely. Board President, I want to first take the opportunity to thank each and every one of you for giving me the opportunity to serve as interim superintendent for Marion City Schools. I can assure you that with the cabinet in place that we have, the decisions we make will be sound decisions based upon the best interests of our students.
Thank you.
With that being said, our first day back for staff will be on August the 12th. Our convocation is on August the 12th, from 7 until 12 at Harding High School in the cafeteria. We're going to be passing out Chromebooks. Breakfast will be served, and then we have a variety of booths that will be set up that people can get information during that morning. We have a special guest, Scarlett Lewis, that will be coming in to give us, share love, choose love. And then that night, we have a night to choose love by Scarlett at 6 o'clock here at Harding High School, where we're inviting our families to come back and hear her speech. Our open houses are scheduled on August the 13th. We're kind of doing a little bit of a staggered start. Elementary will be from 5 o'clock till 7 o'clock. Middle school will be from 4 o'clock until 6 o'clock. And high school will be from 3 o'clock to 5 o'clock. We're also going to do a staggered start for our pre-kindergarten and kindergarten. Our pre-K staggered start will be on August the 14th, 15th, and 16th. We'll be doing individual appointments during those three days. That gives us a huge opportunity to meet one-on-one with our students and our families before that school year starts. So we'll be doing that with our pre-kindergartners. Our kindergartners will do a staggered start as well. That will be on August 14th, 15th, and 16th. We'll be doing that by last names. So on August the 14th, A through H. On August the 15th, I through Q. And then on August the 16th, R through Z. We are still enrolling our families, so if you are interested, please call our enrollment center, and they will help get your child enrolled. All of our students in kindergarten and preschool will start on August the 19th. Transition days, we'll have a transition day for our 6th graders and our 9th graders. That gives our 6th graders the opportunity to come into our building without the 7th and 8th graders, so they can learn what that schedule looks like, where their lockers are, and how to navigate around a middle and a high school. We do that as well for our 9th graders as well. We held our principal meeting. That was held on July 31st and August 1st. We brought our principals back. Mr. Ratliff, I believe I shared with you my plan, and that was to bring all our departments in. And the department head shared what their department was, who was in their department, and what services were provided. I'm a true believer in one message being given, so that was that one message that all of our principals heard from each one of our departments. Summer school, our summer school ended. I just want to give you a quick synopsis of, we had 503 students that was served through our summer school program. And we transported 329 of those students. Our enrollment numbers as of today, Garfield, we're sitting at 329. George Washington, we're sitting at 422. Harrison, we're sitting at 342. Hayes, we're sitting at 213. McKinley, 407. And Taft, 349. Grant Middle School is sitting at 956. And Harding High School is sitting at 1,065, for a grand total of 4,083 students. And that concludes my report today.
Could you do the elementary numbers again?
Absolutely.
Garfield's 329.
329. GW, 422.
Okay.
Harrison, 342.
Yep.
Hayes, 213. McKinley, 407. Taft, 349.
Thank you. Moving on to item four, which is hearing from the public, as we have no public. Guess we'll pass on that one. Item five is the agenda confirmation, any additions or deletions to the agenda. Item 5B, I'd make a motion then to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Widling?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Item six is old business. Mr. Superintendent, do you care to comment a little bit on that?
Currently on the calendar, we have May 16th, that's a Friday. And I don't know what your preference is as far as, I know there was some talks about it, but I don't know if we had come up with a definite. I can share that it's on the calendar as of May 16th.
That's a Friday?
That's a Friday.
What time?
There is no time as of yet. Being Friday would have to be a...
Evening.
A later evening, yeah.
Why did they choose Friday? Why did the team choose Friday?
I can't answer that for you. I know it was either Friday, no, Sunday was mentioned as well.
I mean, I think a number of board members have talked about Sunday being the historic day at 2:00 PM. That Sunday, I think that's when I would like to see it and not really mess with that. I'd also prefer it to be at the Coliseum. I think, rain or shine, everybody knows to go there. And I think it's louder for the kids, meaning if you only got five or six family, you get to hear five or six family. On the football field, it tends to be far away. If you only got five or six, you tend not to hear them, you know? So, and I would like to put in, if we're going to do that, I mean, it'd be me stressing that maybe we need to put in now for whatever date if we're thinking it's the Coliseum, so we get the, obviously, on the calendar for them.
Do you have a motion?
I would make the motion that it's May 18th at 2:00 PM at the Coliseum.
Did you look and see what, is there anything on May 18th?
I didn't see anything, but that doesn't mean we don't have.
And I can check on that date for sure.
And we could keep it, we could not, I mean, we could table it for one more meeting. I mean, there's not a...
Yeah, we're meeting in two weeks. We can come back to check on the availability of the Coliseum for the 18th.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm going to ask Mr. Mullins, because you do sound and you do the, what would be better for you, the stadium or the Coliseum? The Coliseum is better for you?
Can you come to the microphone and say that, please? I'm just kidding, go ahead.
For everybody at home, the Coliseum is the better option for mics.
So I heard May 18th, 2 o'clock at the Coliseum.
That would be the motion. I think we're going to table it to allow you to...
Verify that that date is available.
Go see, I think Ms. Dyer would like to know why Friday, if there is a reason.
Well, somebody came up with that day for a reason. Who was that? Was it the Harding team? Was it the students?
I will get you that answer.
Yeah, let's look into that, too, please.
So we'll table that under old business for next time. Moving on, item seven, new business. Mr. Superintendent, 7A, the Specialized Education of Ohio.
This is a contract for High Road School of Marion for private special education services. Mr. President, there are currently 14 students placed at High Road. That number does fluctuate up and down depending on how many are enrolled at that specific time. But currently, we have 14 students that are placed at High Road at this time.
That's in Marion, right?
Yes. Present? Yeah.
I think I have to, some parent got ahold of me about this, and you're not letting them in, so maybe we talk later, but...
Letting them in?
Yeah.
I have a feeling, I'm much aware of this conversation.
Probably, probably.
And I'd be more than willing to enlighten you on that.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, yeah. And this is only a one-year contract, correct?
Yes.
Yep, okay. I have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Widling?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Item 7B, Mr. Superintendent.
7B?
Is the E's Therapy LLC.
Board President, as you are aware, we are still in that process of trying to find speech pathologists to serve within our district. And this will give us the opportunity to have that, it's virtual, but they will do everything that we need for them to do, but it will be in a virtual setting.
And I think what, I think what you're trying to stress is we would rather have it in-house, in person, but this might be able to fill some gaps.
Most definitely.
Yeah, okay, thank you, sir.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Widling?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Item 7C, the Marion Police Department MOU.
Mr. President, this is our MOU for SROs in our building. It has not changed from year to year. Let me grab my notes real quick. No changes, review annually. There's no fiscal changes to that as well. This is just laying out the structure and the guidelines for our SROs within our buildings.
And then the next item will be approving said contracts.
The contract, that's absolutely correct.
So this is the understanding that we have with them on their assignments and what they'll be doing?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Yep.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Widling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Item 7D, the School Resource Officer Contracts.
And those are the extending from, the first one is the guidelines for the SRO. And now the second one will be the four contracts for the SROs themselves.
And that makes sure we have four officers in the districts.
That is correct.
Yep.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, when we say general and title funds, the Title IV, is that specifically earmarked for this type of...
Yeah, that, one of the things that you can spend Title IV funds on is security.
Okay.
So we pay for one SRO out of the grant, and three come out of general fund.
Okay, all right, got it.
And that's all, that money goes to the city, right? And then they, I guess, pay the officers, their benefits on that stuff?
Yeah, they include all of that in the cost.
Correct.
Wasn't it ESER, and now it's coming out of our general?
Right, it was, it has been ESER for a couple of years, but it'll be general fund.
So, and tomorrow is National Night Out, right? Tomorrow, National Night Out? Okay.
Please come and visit me at the dunk booth, please.
Oh, yay!
Play a lot of bowls, try to dunk it there.
So I'll be there.
Okay.
Awesome.
See you tomorrow.
Absolutely.
Is it chance to rain, or...
It doesn't matter.
He's going to be wet no matter what, so he doesn't care if it rains.
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Widling?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Item 7E, the Village Network, Inc., Mr. Superintendent.
This is, the Village Network provides school-based mental health services across the district. They also provide day treatments at Garfield, McKinley, and Grant Middle School.
What were those schools again?
The buildings?
Yeah.
Garfield, McKinley, and Grant.
Not Taft, who's that, what's that Taft?
RFS.
They've been with us for a number of years, too.
What mental health services are at Taft, though? Is it...
It's the RFS behavioral stuff, right?
RFS for sure.
Okay.
Is there another?
Guidestone.
Yeah, Guidestone and RFS is what's being used at Taft, yep.
All right.
Motion to approve?
I think, it's right here, if you, on the bottom of that first page, the number where they're at, I guess. Okay, right there in the middle. Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Widling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Item 7F is the Marion Micro Farm MOU.
Yes, sir. In collaboration with Marion City Schools and the United Way for North Central Ohio, this helps to get our coordinator for our micro farm that has currently been in place and doing a really, really nice. This MOU splits the cost from the contractor half to the district half.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
So when is the, is there the open house, or did I miss it?
No, that is coming up. I will get you that date, like they did last year. And I know they made like Salsa and some other stuff right from the actual micro farm. So it was kind of really nice with the community there to get that. So I will definitely get you that date.
And this is, this is between us, United Way, from, until the end of the school year, basically?
Yes, sir. It runs until, I can give you that.
It's May 30th to 25th, okay. Yep, so it's a one-year kind of deal here, nine months or whatever, okay. Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Widling?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Item eight, do we need to go to the executive session before the consent agenda? Anybody?
I believe so.
Okay, moving on to item nine. Amendments to the consent agenda. Anybody have any amendments?
I do not.
Karen None, moving on to item 10, the consent calendar, the consent agenda approval. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by the board in one motion in the form listed below. The board will follow Board Policy 165.1, Section E, in regards to the consent agenda. Obviously, the superintendent recommends the approval of all consent agenda items and appointment is specifically conditioned on and subject to successful background checks, receipt, and final administrative review of all application records and receipt of all other necessary documentation. This is a motion to approve, I'll make the motion to approve 10A, B, C, D, E, F, G...
M.
All the way to M. Eight M.
I'll second that.
10. Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Widling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Item 11, or items we moved out, but since we moved none, we're moving on to item 12, which is the future board meetings. The next board, regular meeting, will be Monday, August 19th, 2024, right here in the community room. Item 13 is committee reports. Anybody have a committee report they want to share?
We'll be discussing the cell phone policy here shortly, so...
Which came out of the policy and personnel. You got anything, Ms. Dyer?
No, I was, the multilingual open house as well, so could you send me that date? Today? Oh, tomorrow?
You have the time for that? You get that? Thank you. I'd like to announce it on our thing if we can. Item 14 is information and discussion items. We have none. Item 15 would be the policy at readings and approval for Board of Education Draft Policy 5136. Mr. Superintendent, do you want to say anything about this policy before we get started?
You referring...
I'm referring to the telephone, yeah, the telephone communication one on 5136.
And I know prior to Mrs. DeLaflora leaving, she had updated and then sent out those updates in that email on what she corrected and adjusted.
I think, I think on here she added, definitely she added the earbuds, headphones, et cetera. That was, I think we asked her to either create a new policy or include that in here so kids aren't just walking around our hallways with earbuds and maybe have the phone out of sight, but still listening to whatever entertainment options they can.
She indicated added earbuds and headphones to be included in the definition of PCD, first paragraph. She indicated that added advisors and coaches to the second paragraph.
Yep.
Once the overall policy is adopted, we will make some administrative guidelines to further clarify the use of cell phones during the day and expectations of the policy for students and parents, including educating students about the new policy and the expectations that the cell phones are not to be used during the school day. And we put communications will need to be shared with families regarding the upcoming changes to the 24-25 school year with cell phones. And with that, I will definitely get with our principals as well. Make sure that that's communicated out.
Thank you. Any further preferences you have?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Where we left off from the last discussion, when we were given options A, B, C, or D, after looking at them again, with two revisions to option A, that would be the one that I would favor. I think option B, allowing students to use their cell phones during their lunch break, in between classes, as long as they do not create distraction, disruption, or otherwise interfere with the educational environment. I think we're just asking for problems. While I was in the hallway, or I'm getting there. I don't want to open up our staff to those headaches, to be quite honest. So option A, I do, however, think that students should be able to use the cell phones on the buses. I think it should be at the discretion of the bus driver. I'm not sure what everybody else thinks about that. And then also for after-school activities, I think it's up to the coach or the coordinator of that activity or that sport. So I would choose option A with the change to buses being permitted, and then also after-school and extracurricular activities up to the coach or the coordinator.
A?
This is based on last, this is based on last note, so what, or the last discussion? Do you have the four options that we were giving?
Yeah, I have, they're right here on this, but wouldn't it...
Because I saw the grid, I just thought it was the same one.
Don't we accomplish the same thing? Because I don't like the way the A reads, but under B, if we took out a couple of things that...
Fair enough, yes, if we take those, it doesn't matter to me, whichever. But I don't like the idea of the phones, they're in and out. Let's keep it consistent. So if you do B and take those out, yeah, I'm fine with that. It's the same concept.
And I can see where at lunch would be okay, because there are some students who want to sit and listen to music at lunch. I wouldn't have a problem with that. I think if we just take out in-between classes?
I like that, too, because that's, that is their time to themselves, so...
Before they leave the cafeteria, and I know administrative guidelines will be written elsewhere, but that would be, again, just to keep it as consistent and contained as we possibly can.
Which is just simply unchecking the in-between classes?
There was another, and again, I don't have the, my mistake. On page, let's see, it was on page two, the last time we discussed, classrooms, gymnasiums, locker rooms, shower facilities, rest or bathrooms, and/or swimming pool. To me, in the gym, I, I think that's too much policing. If, if your best friend is at the foul line trying to sink a free throw to win for the conference championship, odds are you're going to want to have your phone out and record it. That was the only, and I know that we had discussed in terms of, okay, changing areas, but I don't, does that happen in the gym? I don't, no.
But is that a, is that during the school day? Because if we're talking about the gym during the school day, that would be different than extracurricular, because you would be allowed to have them out at extracurricular activities. So if you want to take that shot of the winning free throw, that's going to be an extracurricular activity.
Fair enough, then, okay. Can we, so would you leave gymnasiums in there, then?
Well, under...
Because a gymnasium is a classroom. So it's a part of school, it's a classroom, so I would leave it in. I mean, because the extracurricular covers that.
I'm a little more hardcore, I wouldn't even take it away during lunch, but I understand the lunch argument, but, because I want, I would prefer our kids to be interacting with one another, but I'll be okay if we have it lunch. If we can take it out in-between classes, I think it becomes too much to police, and kids will hold on to finish their text before they go into class, and now we're bleeding into class. So I think if, under option B, if we just took out the in-between classes, that that was not checked, and then during after-school activities, this, the way I read this, it's, it's talking about the extracurricular activities. For instance, if you're a basketball player, you can have it at basketball, but I think that should read at the discretion of the advisor and/or coach right after that. And then at a school-related function, I mean, if you're not, if you don't have an advisor or a coach, the fact that you're whipping it out, your phone to watch, you know, or talk, or text, or take photos, or whatever, at our activities, I don't have a problem with that. I like the rest of that paragraph, I think it should be off. I think you're more tempted to look if you know it's on and just silent. I think you're more tempted to look if you know it's on and just silent. And then on the back, the fact that, I think page two, while riding to and from school, I have no problem with, personally, I have no problem with that. On a school bus, on school-sponsored activities at the discretion of the bus driver. I think it should also say right there, and at the discretion of the coach or advisor as well, because you could be riding to a game and he wants you to be focused, or she wants you to be focused on the game and what we're doing. And then, so the rest of that, I guess it does say bus driver, classroom teacher, or sponsor, advisor, coach, so that's all. I think it's all right from there. The next one, I don't, I don't think I have, students who violate this, I don't think I have a problem with any of that.
I guess one other recommendation that was brought up last time, due to the cost of yonder pouches. Perhaps, and the administrative guidelines, again, written elsewhere, that if we do have a repeat offender of the policy, that perhaps that student is required then to use a yonder pouch. Listen, if you can't adhere to this policy, if you can't keep it turned off out of sight during the school day, aside from those time periods that we have permitted, then you need to use the yonder pouch, which would decrease the amount, the number that we would have to buy. What do you think?
I think that's going to be in the guidelines.
Yes, that's what I was saying, I didn't know.
I mean, we passed the policy and then the administrators set the guidelines for how that's going to be carried out.
That's why I just said just a recommendation, because I know you showed those to us last week and everything else, or last month, excuse me.
And, and am I missing it? Is there anywhere in here that says Marion City Schools is not responsible for their devices if they're lost or stolen, or?
Yeah, it's at the end. Students are personally and solely responsible for the care and security of their PCDs.
It's not highlighted.
That we resume.
Okay. I just know administrators spend a lot of time looking for lost or stolen cell phones.
Mr. Hayner, at the back of that, it says students are personally and solely responsible for the care and security of their PCDs. It then says the board assumes no, it should be the board and its staff. Probably need to add staff assumes no responsibility. And then up here on the page three, at the top, it says students are expressly prohibited. I have no problem with that. And then it says, without the express written consent of the superintendent. I don't know if you want that to also include directors and principals, because if some kid's wanting to record student council, they got to keep asking the superintendent. You know what I mean? I don't know if the superintendent wants to take on that.
Or we could always put like designate.
Yeah, I, yeah. Building principals, whoever should be able to give them permission for certain meetings to be recorded, if that's what they're wanting to do. I can see that happening a lot here, too. At the high school wanting to record their, their meetings, but other than that, are we wanting to vote on this tonight or pass it along, or what are we with those changes?
Our next meeting is the 19th. So if we, if we vote on it on the 19th, we've started school. If we vote on it now, then it's a policy that goes into effect before the school year actually starts. So my vote would be that we vote on it now so that we can have it in place on that first day of school.
I agree with that. And that was something that the, I think it was the Akron Public Schools or the Florida one, that they had one week, again, not required, but just the, that's what they recommended, was one week for the kids to get used to it, or we just hit the ground running, hey, this is it. So, but that puts a lot on communication, it has to be clear, concise, and
But I would have to say, Mr. Wiedling, I think they know it's coming. I think
As should every district in Ohio.
You know, it's coming. I think that conversation should be had in the home, because if you're listening to the news, if you're listening, I mean, conversations are being had.
At the open houses, do we have anything planned to address that?
Well, we didn't have this in play up till
I would recommend, if it, if it gets approved tonight, that we mention it at the open houses in some manner.
My only question is, I'm sitting here thinking, I know our policy says that it has to be one meeting and you can approve it on the second. So if we're making changes, Madam former city council member, if we're making changes, are we able to pass it tonight with said changes? Because we've changed what it was. That's the only question I have. And I don't have the policy in front of me on what that says, but I know we have a policy that says we have to have it. We can only pass it on, but it has to be one meeting and then the second meeting you can pass it. And I guess I'm saying if we make all these changes, technically, it's a different policy.
Are we making changes or are we checking boxes?
Well, we're unchecking and adding words, and I think you could say we're making changes to what was presented with the boxes checked, is all I'm saying. Know that throws in a wrench to what we're trying to do.
If that is the case, then I would recommend we have a special meeting to
We've got three of them next week. If you want to put something at the beginning, business-wise, we can.
What do you have?
We have interviews next week scheduled, so we could do a quick approval of the policy if you would like to do that.
Let's do that then.
I would rather do that to make sure we're following policy to
Let's, let's do that on the first
On Tuesday night.
Tuesday night.
Before, we have somebody come in.
Yes.
But that's open house night.
When is it?
Tuesday is open house night, so we wouldn't be able to have anything, we could have
Yeah, we wouldn't have anything ready for open house, but
I think we need to have something this week and we're going to do it. So they can have stuff to hand to the parents at open house. Right?
Yeah, we can make the changes.
Yes, let's make the changes and we'll figure out a day that maybe we can get a special meeting on it. Later tonight, we'll figure it out.
And I can
On Kathy's recommendation, let the record reflect it, it's on Kathy's recommendation.
They're calling it the first reading tonight, so
Yeah, I think it'll be the first reading with those changes. I just want to make sure we're following the board policy and then the staff has the information necessary to then give to parents at the open house on here's the new changes this year. They will cut down on some of the miscommunication the first week. Item 16, I don't think we have anything but a possible executive session. Make a motion to go on executive session to talk about employment.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swonder?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
We're in executive session, we have no action afterwards, other than to